Good evening. I'll call to order the Lincoln County Schools Board of Education Monthly Meeting for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. All right. So if you will join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I appreciate you all being here tonight. We have a packed house, lots of recognitions, a lot of really great things going on here at Lincoln County Schools. So we're going to go ahead and start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I have some really, really special guests here with us tonight. I don't know that we've ever had this happen, but we have four siblings. Two from Pumpkin Center Intermediate and two from Pumpkin Center Primary. And I never do this, like I never read straight off the paper, but I'm always given a sheet that describes our kiddos. And their description was so sweet. I'm going to read it. So we have Ms. Nellie. Will you stand up for me? All right. So this is Ms. Nellie St. Jean, and she is in the fifth grade. And she loves playing volleyball, listening to music, and learning all the words to the songs to sing along. Adventure is in her DNA. And she would ride the tallest roller coaster with her big brother any day of the week. Her favorite subject is social studies. And what is your favorite color? She said it's green. So she is here as one of the oldest siblings, but y'all have how many other siblings? How many of y'all are there? There's nine total. See, as a parent, we're all like, hmm, yeah. Is that mom? Are you mom? Love that. Thank you for being here, mom. All right. So up next, we have Elvis. This is Elvis St. Jean, and he is in the fourth grade. He loves life and smiling nonstop. He plays soccer. He jumps on the trampoline, and he loves any other activity that keeps him busy. He's the biggest animal lover and nurturer, and has a heart bigger than humanly possible. His favorite subject is math. He loves math, and his favorite color is blue. Up next, we have Winnie. Can you stand up, Ms. Winnie? Love that. So this is Ms. Winnie St. Jean. She's in first grade, and she loves playing volleyball like her big sisters, reading anything her eyes come across, playing with her siblings, and doing anything that involves art. Her favorite subject is... What's your favorite subject? Art? She loves art. And her favorite color is orange. So up next, we have Skipper. This is Ms. Skipper. And she is in pre-K in Ms. Gates' room. And she loves being the center of attention as the youngest of nine. So every dog she's ever seen. And she loves playing outside, coloring with Winnie, and she loves to snuggle. Love that. She loves listening to music and books and making people smile. Her favorite thing to learn about a science... And what's your favorite color, Ms. Skipper?
Green.
That's so sweet. So if y'all will join me in standing up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's give them a big round of applause. Okay, so up next, we have our Lincoln County Schools Mission Statement. I'm actually going to pass it off to Mr. Kevin Sanders. He's going to lead us in the mission statement this month.
Feel free to come along with me on this. It is on the wall. Lincoln County Schools will work together with students, families, and the community to ensure a quality, innovative, educational program in a safe environment where students become responsible, contributing citizens, and lifelong learners.
Thank you, Kevin. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I approve that we approve the agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Hefner. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Sloan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, we have an agenda. I will turn it over to Dr. Allen to provide us with some superintendent updates and information items.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. So our audience in the crowd tonight, a couple of things I want to take time to brag about that's going on in Lincoln County Schools since our last board meeting. This week has been defined as Bring Your Legislator to School Week from the ideas of Raleigh coming to the school systems. This week, we were able to host Representative Heather Ryan as she visited GE Massey and School of Tech. I always appreciate the opportunity to showcase the work that our kids are doing and opportunities to speak ways that she can advocate for us in Raleigh. This is also Assistant Principal Appreciation Week across North Carolina. We want to recognize our 33 assistant principals and deans that do the job each day to make sure our schools are safe and our kids are where they need to be and have what they need. I also want to recognize tonight's Ms. Clancy's first official night in our board meeting as our Director of Communications and Director of Media. So glad she's here tonight. I'm sure Ms. Dillinger is enjoying her retirement somewhere sunny right now, but glad Shanti's in this role. Next week, for all those need to know, our art show begins at our Lincoln Cultural Center. It will run from the 14th through May the 2nd. Stop by the Cultural Center to check out all of our kiddos' artwork in middle, elementary, and in high school. Also, want to take time to recognize, look out for some social media postings going up. After spring break, we'll be highlighting our of-the-year top three winners or top three nominees of our nine categories. And we will recognize our winners of those categories the week of May the 5th. That is Teacher Appreciation Week. Want to recognize too, our Lincoln High School Quiz Bowl team. They won our county competition last week and definitely showed off their IQ and their brain skills in that competition. And last two things, I want to recognize one selfless teacher, Lonnie Custer. If you've seen the headlines, if you haven't, check out WCNC, which is TV 36. They did a story about Lonnie. He was recognized as the hometown hero through the Hyundai Car Program, and they surprised him at North Lincoln last week with a brand-new car. And so he had somebody nominate him, people voted, and you get the idea, he won. And so that's a really big deal, and Lonnie Custer is definitely a valued employee for Lincoln County. And then last but not least, want to recognize the kiddos at Battleground Elementary. They did a loving Lincoln County project this year, and they raised over $13,000 for our Lincoln County YMCA. And they presented that check last week to help with offsetting summer camp costs and after-school costs for kiddos that need to go to the YMCA. That's all of our updates. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. So we're going to go ahead and start with our special presentations and recognitions. I know last month I had said that I was passing this off, our senior spotlight, to Ms. Hefner, but I have a special connection to our two senior spotlights this month. So I'm actually going to ask Julius Lane and Zoe Taylor to meet me up at the microphone. Zoe's freaking out a little bit about her picture right now because she feels that's not representative of her at this current date. All right. So I'm going to stand in between y'all, and I'm going to hand this off to Julius. So this is Julius Lane, and he is a senior at Asbury Academy. And this is Ms. Zoe. And so I want y'all to hear a little bit about them and a little bit about their story. So Julius, tell the board about some of the things that you're involved in at Asbury.
I'm in the leadership team, and that's basically where we just try to do things around the school that the kids want done, that are reasonable.
I like that. It's kind of like being a board member. Okay, so Ms. Zoe, tell me about your favorite memory at Asbury or with Lincoln County Schools?
It's definitely when we went out, we went and we painted around. And it was for, what was it? Ms. McKee did it.
Oh, y'all went up to, I want to say, the Hesid House.
Yeah, we went and we painted for the homeless, and it definitely helps. I mean, it was getting out of class, so it was kind of easier. And I was like, I'll go, of course. It was definitely my favorite part.
So tell me about a challenge that you faced.
I've always challenged to want to be in school, but definitely Asbury helped. I did drop out, and then I found them, and then I re-enrolled, and I went back to Asbury. But I definitely think it helps. It's less people, it's less stressful, and they're very communicative. So it's definitely helpful to talk to people, and there's a lot of teachers around.
How do you feel about the staff at Asbury, Julius? Do you have a favorite?
No favorites, but I like the staff a lot. They're all very nice and understanding.
So tell me about a challenge that you faced.
Getting to school, going to school.
Attendance.
Attendance, yes.
Yeah, it's a struggle. So tell me about someone that has been super helpful or had a big impact in your time here at Lincoln County Schools?
My teacher or my principal, Ms. Ely. She's the one who introduced going to Asbury to let me graduate on time because of my absences.
That's awesome. What about you, Ms. Zoe? Who has made a difference in your...
It would definitely be Ms. Gates.
So tell them who Ms. Gates is.
Ms. Gates is our social worker at Asbury. She's definitely very helpful. I see her at my job, and that's when I came back. I was failing because of attendance, but it definitely helps when they have you there and they make sure to communicate that if you don't go, they're just going to keep pushing it and pushing it and pushing it, so it doesn't matter. So you're going to be there.
It's small, so you don't get lost in the crowd.
Yeah, it's definitely helpful. And at Lincoln High School, Mr. McKee was very helpful. The class was always a great class, great community, and I feel like I learned a lot.
That's great. So you mentioned your job. Where do you work?
I work at Chick-fil-A.
Okay, so tell them what you got today. What was your win for the day?
I got a scholarship. It's for this semester. It pays it, and then I can go for another one next semester.
Through Chick-fil-A. So tell everybody what your plan is after high school.
My plan is to find a college that has a Heaven Machine Operator course and take it and do something in that field, maybe even work for the state or the county.
I like that. All right. I know we have one of our county commissioners in the room, so right here's your future employee. All right, so tell me your plans after high school.
I definitely just want to go through college, and I want to try to get through it, and then I want to go for nutrition.
I like that. That's a great plan. We are so proud of you, both of you. I'm proud of you, Zoe, for coming back. So I met Zoe about three years ago, and she is full of personality, and she is the most honest child I've ever seen in my entire life. She'll tell you how it is and doesn't even care. And I really have always been super impressed by that. And I was so excited that you decided to come back because it takes so much courage after you've dropped out of school. It takes a lot of courage to come back, and you were so close. And so I'm so excited to see all the great things that both of you are going to do. Julius, you have lots of names at Asbury. Everything from King Julian to Jesus. Because y'all didn't know it, but he used to have about seven more inches of hair. So we, yes, as you can see.
As you can see in the pictures.
So I am so proud of you both, and I know Asbury is so proud of you. So we can't wait to see what great things you do. All right, let's give them a hand, y'all. So board members, if you'll join me around front.
So I have the privilege tonight of acknowledging our students and staff that are being recognized for being leaders within Lincoln County. And this is called the Lincoln Leads portion. So we're going to start with Pumpkin Center Primary and ask for Ms. Emily Costa, their guidance counselor, to come up. So Ms. Costa is being recognized for her hard work and achievement of receiving the Ramp designation. And this stands for Recognized ASCA Model Program for Pumpkin Center Primary. This designation recognizes schools committed to delivering a data-informed school counseling program in accordance with the ASCA National Model, a framework for school counseling programs. And something really interesting is that Ms. Costa is the first guidance counselor in Lincoln County Schools to receive this designation for her school. So we are very proud of her and the PCPS Ramp Team for this wonderful achievement. Okay, next up is Pumpkin Center Intermediate, and this is a student, Ms. Rachel Britt, who is in fifth grade. Rachel, according to her principal, defines leadership inside and outside the classroom. For the last year, along with the support of her parents, Rachel has researched and presented to the administration the need for the increase of availability for recycling for students and staff. She works with her dad to ensure that the containers get emptied so that her efforts of recycling can continue with the staff. She's bright and determined, and that makes her principal very proud. For Asbury Academy, we have a teacher and a student. We have Ms. Kathy Cook, who is an ELA teacher, and Logan Robbins, who is an 11th grade student. So Asbury Academy embraces the spirit of Lincoln Leads, and tonight we're celebrating two individuals who have demonstrated what it truly means to lead at Asbury. Ms. Kathy Cook, a dedicated ELA teacher, and Logan Robbins, an exceptional 11th grade student, took the initiative to pursue North Carolina Purple Star designation for Asbury, ensuring their commitment to supporting military-connected students and families. When Ms. Cook faced a serious injury and had to take medical leave, Logan didn't hesitate. He put first things first and stayed focused on the goal. While Ms. Cook continued to offer guidance through email, it was Logan who took full responsibility, completely submitting the final application. Because of their leadership and perseverance, Asbury Academy is now proudly recognized as a Purple Star school. Their dedication embodies the Lincoln Leads mission, showing that when challenges arise, Asbury leads with commitment, resilience, and a determination to see things through. Please join us in honoring Ms. Kathy Cook and Logan Robbins for their outstanding leadership and achievement.
Hey, good evening. The North Carolina Association for Middle Level Education is a state-level professional organization that is dedicated specifically to supporting middle-level educators in North Carolina, which also includes a state-level awards process. At the 2025 conference in Charlotte last month, Ms. Maddie Reed from Lincoln Middle School was recognized as the beginning teacher to watch after multiple nominations from across the state were reviewed. So this is not just by region, it's across the whole state. And so I'm going to recognize Ms. Maddie Reed. I happen to know Ms. Reed actually received multiple nominations from Lincoln County Schools, well-respected by her colleagues. And in those nomination essays, her sense of urgency and ability to read her middle school students was absolutely highlighted, as well as a classroom culture of respect and care, where she encourages high expectations, as well as balancing that with student ownership and not only of those high expectations that she has, but also that they should have of themselves. And remember, Maddie is only a BT. How many years, Maddie? Second-year BT, so absolutely exciting. And I have no doubt that she will be a future teacher leader for Lincoln County Schools.
Good evening. I would like to ask Heather Spicola to come forward. And we would like to recognize Heather. She is an ESL teacher at Lincoln Middle School, and this is her first year as an ESL teacher. And she has been accepted into the Fulbright Hayes Project in Oaxaca. Did I say that right? Mexico. I've been practicing. It's not spelled that way. This project focuses on developing K-12 educators understanding of diverse language and literacy practices. Ms. Spicola will be in Oaxaca from June 28th to August 3rd, so six weeks or so for the summer, studying Spanish and working on projects to enhance her teaching. So congratulations to Heather Spicola.
Next, we have some very exciting announcements for our Battle of the Books teams, or some recognitions and announcements. I'm going to start by asking Union Elementary's Battle of the Books team to come forward. This Battle of the Books team is sponsored by Ms. Tammy Allen, Ms. Ann Dixon, and Ms. Katie Lynch. And the students are Darcy Brewster, Addison Christoferson, Emma Collins, Clint Dillinger, Addison Hefner, Faith Hoyle, Gunner Hull, Olivia Jenkins, Luke Kester, Josh Probst, Lacey Wilson, and Lane Wilson. And this is their second year in a row winning the district competition. And the exciting news is that they just competed in the regionals on April 7th, and they won third place. And now I'd like to welcome North Lincoln Middle School's Battle of the Books team. North Lincoln Middle's team is sponsored by Annette Hefner, Dawn Reese, and Jenny Lewis. And the members of the team are Abigail Alvarez, Haley Baker, Charlize Caldwell, Elise Kavanaugh, Jonathan Kroll, Morgan Lawing, Mackenzie Lewis, Abby Leinberger, Hallie Matheny, Sarah Beth Pruitt, Anna Schmerge, and Owen Wilkinson. So all of these team members have read all 20 books, with students becoming experts on selections of books by reading them more than three times. So that must be working. They have worked hard as a team and made lasting friendships. They are going to compete in the regional competition this Thursday, April 10th, and we wish them the best of luck. Okay, next, we'd like to welcome up West Lincoln High School's Battle of the Books team. This team is sponsored by Tammy Johnson and Hannah McKee. And the students that are on the team are Monica Adame, Magley Durin, Lily Henson, Melissa Navah Trejo, Reese Richard, Sarafina Shutt, and Jaselyn Walker. Within the past eight years of the competition, West Lincoln won seven of the eight in the district competition, so they are strong readers. They did compete in the regionals on April 1st, and Ms. Johnson wants them to know how Next, we would like to invite members of the Sunrise Resource Center to the front. So Sunrise Outreach through the Sunrise Resource Center provides free and vital support for moms, kids, and families in the Sunrise community. Currently, there's 50 students in 2nd grade and higher, 17 students in kindergarten and 1st grade, 22 infants and preschoolers, and more than 25 moms being served by this program. Their goal is to offer programs that help our students succeed, from early literacy to elementary and middle-school tutoring, and even support for parents through classes and resources. This work's so important because access to quality education is key to overcoming poverty and creating bright futures for our students. The program is seeing real progress, with students in tutoring programs showing significant growth in reading and math. By building relationships and providing consistent support, Sunrise Outreach is investing in our community's well-being and educational access.
First up, Jackson Dollar. He is here, I saw him, there he is, all right. The Jackson Dollar made the North Carolina Basketball Coaches Association All-District First Team. District 10 is made up of Gaston, Cleveland, Catawba, Lincoln, Burke, Rutherford, and McDowell Counties. Jackson led the team with 20 wins this season, and he averaged 15.8 points a game, 7.8 rebounds, 6.1 assists, 3 steals, and 2 block shots per game. He had over 65 dunks on the season, and so he is a tremendous athlete who's being heavily recruited at major college level in both basketball and football. So congratulations, Jackson, for such a great career. Thanks, Jackson. Just want to make sure we got the picture. Jackson, come back. Sorry, Jackson. Next is Emma Monenary. Emma is a guard at Eastling High School. She averaged 18 points a game, 6-point rebounds a game, 4.1 assists per game, and 4.6 steals with 2 block shots a game. She was named the 2025 3A Western Foothills Player of the Year. She's been first-team All-District twice the last two years. She recorded her 1,000th point on December 6th and recorded her 500th rebound on February 18th. She has collected, so far, four Division I offers in college basketball. Just recently, College of Charleston, University of North Carolina Wilmington, LaSalle, and Stetson. Congratulations, Emma. All right, next, I'd like to welcome up the Lincoln High School Basketball Team. with an impressive record of 24-6 and 12-2 in the conference. The Wolves shared the conference title regular season with Maiden, but beat them in a thrilling victory in the conference tournament. They beat Maiden Blue Devils, which was a great game, so congratulations there. The season, team's success didn't stop there. They also had, they went deep into the playoffs to the third round, and marking it the first time in nine years that the Wolves reached such a deep playoff run, and there's going to be a lot of people back for next year's team, so congratulations there. Congratulations to Catawba Valley 2A Conference Champions and Tournament Champions, Lincoln High School Wolves. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're going to take some more pictures, because I've got some more stuff to say. All right, y'all stay up there. Okay, now I'd like to talk about Catawba Valley 2A Conference Player of the Year, and that would be LJ Smith. He is only a sophomore, and he managed to break the single-season sophomore scoring record with an impressive 960 points just this season. It would be a milestone that is expected to stand for many years down the road. LJ finished the season averaging just 33, 33.5 points a game, 9.4 rebounds a game, 3.3 assists per game, and 2.7 steals per game. Currently, LJ is ranked the number-one point guard, or excuse me, combo guard in the state of North Carolina for his class, and last year ESPN had him ranked in the top 25. Not only is LJ Conference Player of the Year, but he also made District 10 Player of the Year, also made the first team there. Gaston Gazette First Team and Second Team All-State. He also was on other teams, but I don't have all the time in the world to say all of them. But you know, another thing that's so impressive was his GPA is over 4.0. So not only is he excelling on the basketball court, but more importantly, he's excelling in the classroom. So congratulations again to LJ Smith. Now, I will say, I haven't seen North Lincoln Men's Basketball Team. I know a lot, yes. Come on, Ty. But the whole team, a lot of them play other sports, so that's why they can't make it. Ty, I think you were voted best-looking, too. All right, since they couldn't make it, I am going to read things about the team, though. They were the Western Foothills 3A Conference Regular Season and Tournament Champions. They won 16 straight games after starting 0-2 in the conference. This group of young men tied the school record for wins at 22 wins for this season, and that's the second year in a row they've done this. So congratulations to the Western Foothill 3A Conference Champions, the North Lincoln Basketball Team. Now I'm going to read about Kellen Carr. I know he plays baseball, so they have a game tonight, but he was named the Western Foothills 3A Conference Player of the Year for the second time as junior and senior year. He's also All-District First Team. He's all-time leading scorer for North Lincoln High School, 1,656 points. He also had 1,161 rebounds, 575 assists, 284 steals, and 128 blocks. And he will go on to play college baseball at Coastal Carolina next year. And then, the best-looking guy on the basketball team, Ty Sanders, he was named the All-District Second Team. He finishes his career with 1,233 points, 220 rebounds, 321 assists, and 95 steals. He was named also the Western Foothills Athletic Conference Tournament MVP, and he will play college basketball at the University of Lynchburg. So congratulations, and we wish you the best when you go to play basketball next year. Congratulations, so good to hear you, and we'll get your picture. All right, if the women's, North Lincoln High School Women's Basketball Team. There we go. North Lincoln High School Women's Basketball Team, they also won the Western Foothill 3A Conference Tournament and the conference championship. They scored over, they scored 2,080 points during the season, which averaged 67 points per game. They won four home playoff games, made it to the final four round in Wake Forest, and won 29 games in a row. So that's very, very impressive, so I would like to congratulate the North Lincoln High School Women's Basketball Teams. Congratulations. Also, Ally Smith, she was named to the All-District First Team this year in basketball. She scored 608 points this year. She averaged 19.6 points per game. She had 140 rebounds, 112 assists, and she led the team in steals with 117 steals. She also hit her 1,000th career point this year as well. So congratulations, Ally. I think you're just a sophomore? Yeah, that's pretty impressive, 1,000 points already. So congratulations there. You want to go ahead and take your pictures now? And Coach Carr was named Western Foothill 3A Conference Coach of the Year in her first North Lincoln went 14-0 in the conference and went 29-2 overall. Again, first year as the head coach, congratulations, Coach Carr. And that is all.
Board members, we do not have anyone who requested to speak before the board per board protocol, so we will move on to closed session. I will turn it over to Mrs. Lopez.
The board will adjourn into closed session to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1, to discuss matters that are confidential under North Carolina law pertaining to personnel and student matters under the Family Educational Right and Privacy Act, and to discuss matters that are protected by attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
I move that we get a closed session.
I have a motion by Ms. Hefner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brandy Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ahh. Those opposed? Motion is carried, we are now in closed session. Those opposed, motion is carried. We are now in closed session.
We are now back in open session. No action was taken. We'll move on to our first action item, which is the day treatment services. The administrative staff is requesting that the board approve Rockwell Development Center for Day Treatment Services beginning August 1st, 2025. I will entertain a motion as presented. Have a motion by Ms. Hebner. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The motion is carried. Up next we have our consent agenda items. We have the approval of minutes from the work session from March 4th, 2025. Special call board meeting, March 4th, 2025. The board meeting, March 11th, 2025. The budget amendments. Personnel recommendations. Extended field trips curricular. The approval of policies which stood open 25 days for input as presented in the agenda. The approval of bids, the new line televisions. Mowing service contract. Garbage collection service. Love Memorial School Flat Roof Repair. Union Elementary School Flat Roof Repair. S.R. Louder Elementary Paving. And the G.E. Massey Elementary School Boiler Replacement. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Hebner. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. So board members, we have our reminders and announcements. April 14th to the 21st is our spring break for students and staff. I think everybody is absolutely ready. And we have our May 6th work session, May 13th monthly meeting. And you'll remember that Ms. Linda Mattney has set up our Google Calendar for us. And you can find other events and upcoming activities that the board members have been invited to on that. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.